Okay, we'll call a meeting to order at 7:09. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is it a second?
I'll second that.
Got a second? Any discussion of the agenda?
Anybody else get any minutes, or do they get emailed to us?
They're emailed.
They're all emailed? Okay.
And there's a higher copy in our mailbox, which...
Oh, is there now? Okay.
Do you want that one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes. Discussion, corrections? Dick? I'll give you time, Bob.
Yeah, go ahead.
From Joe.
Thank you. In the middle of the first page, under approval of the minutes, we said Iraq is misspelled twice. Second line from the bottom. Mr. Combs made a motion that the town of Castleton accept its allocation. Instead of it, A-I-T-S. And that's it for me.
You ready, Bob?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes of July 12th indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion's approved. Citizens' comments and concerns, items that are not on the agenda? Nancy, I believe you have something for us?
Yes, thank you. I hope you can hear me. And thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. I wanted to let you know that the library is applying for another grant. This is from the Department of Buildings and General Services from Vermont. And the focus of the, of the, of our grant is under construction, infrastructure, and needed projects. And I don't know if you have the little handout with the nice colorful pictures? There's, my, well, yeah, yeah, that's right. Thank you, Joe. So, that just gives you an idea. We are under the Human Services Educational Facilities. You can see, I think it's the first column on the left. And we would, we are writing a grant to repair our three chimneys at the library. They are needing both repair in a couple of cases, and restoration in one case, actually being torn down and rebuilt. The board has identified this need. I think also, a few years ago, the, the insurance visit from the citizen, that, what's it called? League of Cities and Towns came to, you know, do its usual inspection. And they identified some of these problems more internally than outside. But, of course, all the same. We, as I think you know, the board has been diligent in looking at the needs of the library and finding funds in order to preserve it and maintain it. We applied for a 1772 grant from Vermont Preservation Trust for the maximum amount of $10,000 for this purpose. And we were awarded the $10,000. So, with that $10,000, our, our, the grant that we will be applying for will be, what, $35,000, $36,000. And it will, of course, have the, have the support of that $10,000 grant. This is a matching grant, so that's why we are applying for approximately $35,000. We do have the money for that. Many of you know that the library has been able to carry over money over the years when it hasn't used it all. And there's been various reasons for that that are, you know, I think quite supportable. But at the, and at the same time, this board has looked at that money and said, "We need to really earmark that for the preservation of the library and repairs such as this." So, this, my reason for being here is I don't need a resolution or anything as formal as with the Vermont Community Development Program grant. But I am asking, the board is asking for, I guess you would say, your blessing for this. And that if you could communicate that to us in writing. If we had time, the minutes would serve that you had made that decision, if you do. But our time is very short right now. And one of the reasons for that is that we've been waiting for the estimates from the Mason. And, so the grant is due on Friday. I'm hoping to finish it off, get it all in the mail by Wednesday afternoon, possibly Thursday morning. So, one solution for this would be if you could ask Mike just to write a letter saying that the board has been supportive of the library pursuing this grant, doesn't need to be long. Or if you have another idea, that would be great. But it'd be great for me to have something to tuck in to the grant from you.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Is there a motion on that?
Well, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
What's the, what is the name of the grant, Nancy?
Sure. The name of the grant is the, well, again, it's called the Building Communities Grant. And it's from the General Assembly and Department of Buildings and General Services. But it's, it's called the Building Communities Grant. And our area would be under Human Services Grant Facilities.
Will that letter be addressed to you, Nancy, or to the Building Services Committee?
You know, it would be great if you could address it to either the Commissioner of Buildings and General Services, and that person is Jennifer M. Z. Fitch, P.E., or it would also work for you to send it to Junie Bruno, and who's been kind of helping out with the grant for people. And I could give you her title as well. But I think if you just, if you wouldn't mind doing it to Ms. Fitch, that would be great.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the Select Board asked the town manager to write a letter of support to the library addressed to the person mentioned just a moment ago that I didn't write or read yet. And for the Buildings Community Grant Program. And that with, if you're okay with this, Jim, that the chairman sign it.
I'll second that motion.
And, and you might, oh, thank you, excuse me.
Go ahead, Nancy.
You might just reference that it's, you know, the, a matching grant that we will provide, be providing the matching funds.
Got that right.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. It's a second, gentlemen?
Second.
Any second.
Any other discussion? The motion is to have the town manager write the letter. And he, he or I will sign it, no problem. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passed.
I recuse myself.
Okay, Joe.
Thank you.
There are no other negatives, so I guess it passed. Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Any other citizens' concerns, items not on the agenda? Jane?
Okay, I'm going to follow your whole instruction. Okay, my name is Jamie Nickwall. And my address is 999 Blissville Road in Castleton, Vermont. And I know I'm one of the biggest complainers, as I've been told in the town before, rightfully so. Two Fridays ago, we had fly rock come once more from the Camara Sleep quarry. This is the third time it has happened. And I'm sure a few of you who are aware of that have probably been here. Every time fly rock has left the quarry, it hit houses across the street, blew my upstairs doors apart in 2003, landed all over my yard in 2006. Once again, we had a currents of fly rock from Camara Sleep from behind my house. And then, two Fridays ago, my husband was home, and a rock, there was another explosion, rock all over my property, went across the street, went through the roof of one of the houses, through the attic, through the floorboards, and came, was lodged in the ceiling upstairs. And then chunks that were over 20-some pounds landed about a half mile away. I have a very big concern. This town has to step it up and make sure they're following rules and regulations that were established with our zoning board and the laws. And also, I don't know, anybody else who pertains to, they've got to do something.
Is your, is your, are you basing this on zoning?
Um, well, unless there's other places, I know it says that...
No, are you basing it on a violation of the zoning ordinance?
Uh, yes, but it also endangers people's lives. And I'd like to know who covers that, who should be regulating it.
If your, if your, if your complaint is based on zoning regulations, then this board does not deal with zoning regulations. You file your complaint with the zoning administrator, Jonas Rosenthal. If you are displeased with his investigation, you would go to the Development Review Board, and from there, to the Environmental Court. That's the zoning part of it. As far as the other part of it, are you planning to do that?
Yes.
All right, well, I would suggest that if you do that, you cite the appropriate zoning regulations that you feel are being violated.
Okay. Also, now, who was in charge of dumping on, you know, the property all around there, using it as a dumping site? Because I know you addressed those issues before numerous times.
Dumping on their own property?
It doesn't make any difference. They're not allowed to dump trash and tires. And I know, Jim, you have personally been out there to address those situations.
If you want to file a complaint with me tomorrow on that, I'll be happy to follow it up, Jane.
Okay, now, is that with just the health officer, or is that the Select Board also?
No, that is the health officer.
Okay, and also with the state, I assume, right?
Pardon?
There are state laws pertaining to that also?
Certainly.
Okay, and then you've never followed up on those other tires that were never removed? I know you came out twice, and they were never removed.
I don't believe I found the tires.
I know, because you didn't want to walk in there, and you assumed that Camaras were gone.
I politely disagree with you on that, Jane.
Now, I have, you know, some documentation that you made.
Okay, well, you, you follow that up with me tomorrow, and I'll be happy to investigate it as the health officer.
Okay.
Okay, now, as far as safety is concerned, has the, has the police department or someone in mine safety been involved in this?
Yes.
Have you filed with them? Well, that's where you go with that.
Okay, so the town's not going to do anything?
We're not saying that. I'm just trying to, you're in the right church, but you might not be in the right pew.
Okay.
Meaning, bringing it to the Select Board. If there's, if there's something that is appropriate after you contact the appropriate departments, I'm sure this board will do what it can to follow up if it's necessary.
Now, is there a, some kind of guideline and stuff that the board has to do and what they're responsible for?
File your complaint, and we'll, we'll see what it is.
But I mean, is there...
They will refer to it, they will refer to it, we'll get up to that beginning.
Is there a written thing that says what the Select Board is in charge of, and what they do?
Sure.
Is there any way I can get a copy of that?
Certainly, you can get it from the town clerk's office.
Okay.
It's in the Vermont statutes.
Okay.
Okie doke.
Okay, so I was just wondering, is that the same Vermont statutes? That we have right here? Bear with me. The Vermont statutes online that pertains to enumeration powers?
For the Select Board?
Yes.
We don't have that in front of us, but we'd be glad to look at it.
Okay, because that's one, I know it pertains right there.
Mm-hmm.
And it does, you know, regulations surging all solid waste. Regulations may require separation of components and waste. So, that probably has to do with it. There's a few other things.
If you want to do that, you can file that tomorrow, be happy to investigate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other citizens?
I have a, I have a question for Jane.
Sure.
Has, who from the state has gotten a hold of you? Is it, is it MSHA? Is that what they call that?
Yeah, MSHA.
You want to speak to that?
Yeah, let me, let me tell you where it's at with it. So, we had Department of Public Safety, State Police investigating the explosive piece, because they're the ones that permit and license for explosive. Two fire service investigators came down, and also MSHA, who I just met with on Friday. So, right now, I don't know where all, I mean, I'm obviously writing my report based for the town and public safety issues. I've talked with Captain Peterson, who is the, he's the, he's the, he's the lead State Police Officer that actually, that's under the Commissioner, that actually authorizes licenses and permitting for that. So, that's the big piece that I'm looking at for that. As for everything else, it's, it's, you know, I don't know where everybody's at. So, my, my goal for this week is to see where public safety is with it, with Steve Gelder, he was the investigator, and check with Fire Service and see what they have put together. Because they all got different things. I know MSHA already came down there. I don't know if they issued anything, I haven't really talked to them, mapped the fact. So, there's a number of agencies that are involved, so that's where it's at. It's not complete yet.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah.
Any other citizens?
Nobody.
Items not on the agenda? Seeing none? Move on to the police report, Peter.
Yep. Okay, y'all have the, the copy of the monthly June 2021 monthly report. With the call to service, anything out of there that stood out? That you want to talk about? Property watches were down, obviously, for this last month. I don't know why. If nothing there, can move to criminal arrest. We got, we went up, obviously, a big increase in June, probably because of the beginning of the summer. A lot more stuff falling in, deaths and assaults, DWIs, driving license spat, four wide people. So, they were arrested. Any questions on those things? Not that on that. Go to our, you know, our, to see our traffic violations. We, we went up a little bit in June than we did the previous month. We're seeing a lot more traffic. We did move our, one of our cars down the Creek Road, right in a little bit dip before we get to Point of Pines on the exit from the north side. Yeah, the north side of Point of Pines, that little dip break down in there. We put it down, wouldn't have it there for a little over a month. And then we're going to move to River Street. We've got several people, they want it in different places, different locations.
One question on that. Does that record everybody's speed whenever it hits it, or is it just?
No.
No?
That one doesn't record. And then you can't, and it doesn't take a snapshot of it?
No, I, I realize that, but I didn't know if it gave you a, a record of what everybody got hit at.
So, we have two of those, right?
Correct. We've got size, but the other one is, that, that thing's like, that thing is, tends to put up. It takes like three people, and, and it doesn't charge, it's...
So, that's the one that's out here in front of the, the safety building?
Yes, the one that's, no, the one that's parked in the, where the employee parking lot is.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's been given last rates, guys.
Yeah, it needs some, it needs some stuff there. And, you know, for, you know, and realistically, in the future, I really would like to get some mounted ones, that they can mount, like kind of like West Rockland has, different townships having a Monville telephone pole or a Monville sufferer pole, and they're kind of there permanently. Those are huge monies, so that's something that...
That, that is, that is part of the, that pedestrian scoping study that's going on right now? That would be part of it?
I think those are, tend to slow people down.
Oh, yeah, when they see a flashing, flashing lights going, you can see at the interstate, it does all the time. So, nothing, if you go back to the other, Justin put some stuff into him and Stevens, we did a stop the bleed, which we do for the school district. And also with probation call, they did it for that. Hays did pass as national standards. And so, we have three. Nate has to retake his, he did pass the first time around. So, we've seen an increase on those medical calls. And then, obviously, the government sideways seemed to grant, we got purchased two in car, modern car systems, which are very, very expensive, which we needed, because we've got two antiquated systems that we're going to replace. You can see where that went, for the cost of that. We just got awarded the passive grant, and you can see what each department got out of it. Then I gave you the debrief on the explosive piece, and that's a continuing thing. So, I'll keep everybody pressed as that moves forward. Are there any further questions? Yes.
Dick?
Um, I just wanted to bring you up to speed. There's been another person who lives, resides on Rice Willis, who has complained about quarry blasting and lack of a warning whistle before the blast. So, perhaps tomorrow, I'll give you a call, or you can give me a call, and I'll fill you in on the details.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely want them to do, to fill out a statement, but I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow about it.
Yeah, it may or may not be related.
Okay.
So...
Yeah.
But it's kind of, we need to keep these people, you know, we need to keep everyone safe.
Well, during that, when, when that first happened, when I went out there, it was a matter of, I mean, obviously, you've got several neighbors that were very upset. Some didn't know what happened, you know, the guy, the, Mr. Godfrey, who had to rock over his roof, they didn't know until they got back there. Because nobody was at the house at the time. And I don't even know if people showed up down where that big rock landed down on Mary Lane. I don't even know if they even showed up and even seen it. So, there's some neighbors that weren't around, but there were a lot that were. Like Mrs. Weedy, who lives next to them, she had a lot of, a lot of flying rocks on her property.
They were, just to add this, they were all over our road and everything. They're lucky they didn't kill somebody or cause an accident also going down the road.
Yeah, so, you know, so I'll, I'll follow up on that. And that's something that, I may put out on our website. If anybody doesn't know, they can email me or contact me if they want other information.
Thank you, Chief, any other questions?
I just got one quick question. What is a bollard? I guess I don't know what a bollard is on the back page. Is that... It's like around the, the tank saw battery box, that's the conch, steel tubes filled with concrete. Oh, okay. Okay.
I didn't know either what that was.
It's a protective new electrical box that we just put in there. Okay, okay.
So, they hit that, not the electrical box?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I've never seen that before, so...
Any other questions for the Chief?
Mr. Chairman?
Joe?
Joe?
Yeah, I, I think I know the answer to this, but Chief, who's been writing the grants that bring this money to the town?
Uh, Justin has. He, he does quite a bit of these grants, he does all our highway safety grants and does the passive grant.
Well, I think we should express our gratitude to him for getting the town this money.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I've got the letter from the board.
Mm-hmm.
Herbert, that'd be a good idea. I've thanked Justin in person many times. It's amazing that he's doing this.
Any other questions for the Chief? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Move on to the tax map. Data recording, tax map made to propose with the town of Castleton. Mike?
CAI is a new company. They purchased the company that we currently, currently use. That's, and that's the one that Jonas and Mary Jo had recommended to the board over a year ago, that actually includes all this data on the tax map, so that shows the adjacent landowners in a lot more detail. Well, that guy was retiring, so CAI bought them out. So, Mary Jo's had a conversation with the new owners, owner, saying that they, we still want the same service of how their, how the other company was doing it. And he's agreed to keep status quo for us. This is just the new contract with that company. And the, and the $3,500 we budgeted for then, so it's in the budget. So, you're looking for the motion? Yeah, we're looking for a motion to approve the new contract with CAI for tax map.
Is there a motion to approve the new contract with CAI Technologies?
I'll make a motion that we accept the contract for CAI.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Probably should have the dollar amount in here.
Yep. Not to exceed?
Not to exceed $3,500, and I'll add that to it.
Should it also suggest that authorize the town manager to sign this contract?
That would be weird.
I also will add in my motion to have the town manager sign this contract.
I'll second that, too.
Second. Any other discuss, Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the second point on the maintenance contract. After the indication that we are responsible for $3,500, it goes on to say that if property record cards are provided, client shall pay an additional $15 per building added. What does that do to our costs?
If, if they have to be added, Joe, for, for the listers cards, it would cost us $15 per, per add, but it doesn't change what it is now. It's just like we, if we add more stuff, it's going to cost $15. I think, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe we budgeted more than $3,500 for this anyway. What's that? No, I, I read it. It's, it's $15 per add, additional, for any additional building added or changed. So, of course, I, I don't know what the fees are that Mary Jo charges when she has to do this stuff. So, I would, I would, I can't give you an honest answer. I'd be lying if I said it would cover that, but I will certainly make a note, look into it for you. But it'd be the $15.
Well, I'm a little, I'm a little uneasy about the lack of understanding. I mean, are we talking about 10 additional buildings? Are we talking about 1,000 additional buildings, that $15 apiece?
It would, it would depend.
To know.
Understood, Joe. Well, it's, when, when we have new buildings in town, or when there's, you know, adds to what, what the current infrastructure is, like listers cards, land or, or property, then it would change that. So, I don't know how many houses are going to be built in next year or the year after, into '22, but I would say it's probably not going to be 100.
Are you saying that no current property record cards include building sketches?
No, we have, we have properties and buildings that require sketches. So, if there's, if this would say, if there's any, my understanding is if there's any additional buildings added or changed. So, our current lister cards are covered. It's if we, if they add any more or change them, then it would be a $15 charge.
Well, somebody adds a building anyways, they have to pay for it anyways, right?
Yeah, there's permit stuff, so it, it would likely cover it, but I just don't have that at my fingertips to say it's $15, or is it $35?
Yeah, that's not how I read that second sentence. I think it says if any of our existing property record cards include building sketches, we pay $15 additional for each card, each building, rather.
That's, that would be my understanding, but, because they're already maintaining them now. So, my, my understanding is if, if we have a, if we add a card or a sketch to something that's been mod, that gets modified, then we would, then the charge would apply. But if we have, you know, I forgot how many properties we have. If they, those existing ones aren't impacted by this unless they're changed. Or sketches added.
Yeah, that's not the way I read that second sentence at point two. But feel free to proceed on this.
Can I comment on that? Want to carry it over? Well, I think, I understand, or I agree with the lack of clarity there, Joe. My understanding was in the past that it was only lister cards, new lister cards and lister cards that were changed, that we paid a fee on. So, there's that terrible word, I'm going to assume that that's still the case. But we could ask the town manager to clarify that, I suppose.
We have a, we have a deadline, can we hold this over, Mike, for the next meeting?
Yeah, it's been held over since June, so I guess it's not...
That's true.
So, can you get some clarity on that, Mike?
Yeah.
Because my understanding was it was only new cards and cards that were changed. But I can understand Joe's skepticism, because it definitely lacks clarity there. but I can understand Joe's skepticism because it definitely lacks clarity there.
Is it the consensus of the board that you'd like to hold that over until Mike gets clarification?
Yes.
That's fine, yeah.
That's fine, under the, everybody good with that? Moving on to the grant list 411.
So this has been filed with the state. If you have a lot of questions on it, I'm probably not the guy to ask. I haven't had a chance to sit down with Mary Jo, but this is what she, it was an amendment she made a change to it and updated it, and this is what got filed through NEDR to the Didn't need my approval.
Any questions that we can't answer?
The only question I have is this is, yeah, it says that we have $497 million worth of property in the town. Am I reading that correctly?
It was, it was up like four points, something million. The grant list total.
Any other questions, comments? Don't we need a motion on that? We have that form there.
I didn't think we did.
No?
I don't think we have to do a motion on this.
We don't? Okay, all right.
I think this is more of an FYI thing, I think.
Okay. All right then, let's move on to the fun part, set the tax rate.
We got Arizona missions, Jim.
Arizona missions, you asked.
Oh, Arizona missions, yeah, we have one from Mary Jo.
So to make sure I understand this, we just have to authorize the assessor to change the value of that property?
Forty-five hundred dollars less, yeah.
So I'll take a stab at it. I make a motion that we approve the assessor's request to fix an error in the amount of $4,500 on the property of Barbara Chaney, parcel number 435100007. The amount of, to change the amount to $4,500 less than the property is currently assessed for.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I think so, you did. I'm proud of you.
No discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I know some of the stuff you gotta get right for the assessor, the auditor. Yeah, you do.
Now we move on to setting the tax rate.
Oh, boy. I've got the chief's.
Go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion that we set the municipal tax rate for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 to $0.4083 and set the local tax agreement rate at $0.0059.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Sure, good, okay. All right, discussion.
See what last year's was. So it went from, it went from .04588.
Okay, that's it.
Down to .4083 under the municipal amount to be raised by taxes, that tax rate, and you can see the one below it. Just, that's last year's, this is this year's. So you go to that one to that one.
Oh, okay, all right.
So we went from 46 cents to 41 cents in round numbers.
So we went down four cents.
Right, okay.
Really five cents.
Five cents, true.
Any other discussion on this? Do you have a motion, a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Keep going.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the education tax rate for fiscal year 2122 for the homestead rate will be $1, $1.5338 and the non-homestead rate will be $1.7197.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Mike, is that a typo?
On which one?
Second one, 0.0059?
0.0059.
I have to look into the formula.
I have to look into the formula. No, it's right here, Jim.
Okay, all right, okay.
What do you, what do you mean by typo though? Where, on which form?
The cover letter.
It's the same one that we got on our sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same number.
Okay. Okay, that's the question on it.
You know, those are about, that's like for the people that have, if they, if they're not paying the full share of their taxes, the town has to still pay the education portion on like tax stabilization and those type of things.
No, the only question I would have is that Dick's motion was to accept it.
Yes.
We don't have any choice.
You know, that's why, I know, it's a formality.
The state tells us what to do and sets it.
And we won't like it.
And yes, and we won't like it, yes. We're static about it.
I'm not agreeing to that.
You're not?
No, no, I don't have to like it. I think there's a little sarcasm there, though.
There is.
Just a little bit.
Okay, we have motion, a second on that?
I think so.
Okay. Any discussion?
We won't like it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, one last thing.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to set the low penalty for late filing of homestead declaration at 3% and set the high penalty for late filing of homestead declaration at 3%.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a point?
Sure.
So just so it's on record, so for the combined tax rates for a resident of Castleton, the rate is $1.9480, a decrease of $0.463, so almost five cents. And for non-residents, the rate is, combined rate is $2.1339 or a decrease of 0.0485 over the last year, so both tax rates were decreased over last year's.
Excellent point. Very good, thank you. Okay, we move on to bowels, unlicensed dogs. We have Nedra's list here.
So what do we do about unlicensed dogs, Mr. Chairman?
Joe likes that one. He's waiting now, you can see.
Last year, we referred it to the constables for follow-up, and I believe the constables declined to follow up.
Constable.
Because you only have one, right, Mike?
Well, that way somebody out there thought we, you hired and appointed a new one, there is no.
So what are you proposing, Mr. Chairman, that we do with this?
Well, it's copy the list that we give it to the animal control officer. Can he legally follow up on this, Mike?
He can.
He can? Can we instruct him to do that?
You may, you can.
We have the money to pay him to do this.
It's in his budget and he works usually with the Castleton Police Department if he needs help on issuing any kind of municipal tickets or civil complaints. It's a lot of them.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't there some frequent flyers on this?
Oh, yeah.
So I would suggest that perhaps we approach the frequent flyers first. By that I mean the people that have not licensed their dog for years. So those are two different lists here? There was one list of unlicensed dogs and a list of licensed dogs. Okay, the unlicensed in the first two pages? That was my understanding. Okay, I just, I can't quite. Because it says summary for all untagged dogs and then.
Total animals, is that 86, is that what I'm reading right?
And then the second one is the animal report, which is licensed dogs. Okay, so we got a page and three quarters of unlicensed. Yeah, and then about 10 pages of people that are actually doing the right thing. But I'm very confident that I've seen some of these names.
We got 364 people that are abiding by it and we got 86 that refuse to.
Or just.
Just doesn't want to.
Didn't bother, didn't see the need. What is the penalty? Does anybody know what the penalty is? Is it so much a month or?
I really don't want municipal ticket, but I.
Just a flat rate of a penalty?
I don't know what it is under that statute, though.
That would be by state statute. Would that be by state statute and not town ordinance?
It depends, that's, that's where the Town of Castleton really lacks with some of the, depending on if it's a, if it's an ordinance or if it's a municipal or civil violation. So Chris can issue municipal complaints, but if it's something in zoning or something like that, then it has to go through its process to be adjudicated through environmental court and those type of things. So municipal, municipal complaints are the best way that we can have immediate impact on something because when they get hit with the fine, then they've got to pay it or, you know, repercussions with outside of our jurisdiction. When they go to like renew their license and they can't renew their license and those type of things.
So Mike, and I know you've got plenty of things to do, but can I ask you to find out what the consequences are for not registering your dog?
I will follow up.
Let me know?
Yeah, I'll follow, I'll follow the whole board, I'll let you know what I find out. And the fine, whatever's associated.
Just so we have an idea of this, if this actually has any teeth whatsoever.
It does, it does.
Do you know, Jim? I don't.
Yeah. I, I believe it's the last resort, the dog can be destroyed.
That I don't want to do.
I know you don't, neither do I.
It's not a dog's fault.
Neither, that's not exactly right. Poor choice of owner.
Yep, it's not, it's not his fault, he's a dog.
That's right. Okay, anything else on this? Well, this is going to Chris and if he has any problems, would he come back and go through you like? If he feels necessary to come to the board, fine. Anything else on this? Okay. Managers report. Any questions for Mike?
He's in a, he's in a big egg.
I'm picking up speed, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address the board with this one. On, under one C, the TAP grant, we haven't officially been notified, but I was unofficially notified today that that grant request for the sidewalks from Castle and Corners to Parsons Hills was approved.
Great.
That's good news.
That is.
Great. What else? Anything else to you? Page two, Mike, you have any que, oh, you won't, I thought that was it, Mike.
Nice try, Joe.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm looking, I was ignoring.
You've had a tough weekend, Mike, go ahead.
Just to address the board about the ARPA money, I'm assuming that the board wants to still meet to discuss what you might do with that, that funding, because times, we haven't been awarded the money yet, but they keep saying it was going to be here in June. June's gone, July's almost gone and we still haven't received it.
That's the recovery money?
Yeah.
What we're talking about having a public meeting, I know Joe mentioned that.
I'll do, I'll organize whatever you guys, however you want to approach this.
Okay, what's your, what are your thoughts, gentlemen? Joe?
Well, I, I think that it would be a good idea to invite members of the public to contribute to our decision-making on this matter. I think it, clearly we could put this on the agenda of a meeting when we had a very light agenda and devote some time to it. If we don't anticipate that kind of a meeting, maybe we should have a special meeting. I'd be open to either of those options, but I, I think we need to make sure that people are aware that this is an opportunity for the town to address some significant issues that may not be addressable in the near future if we waste the opportunity to use this money.
Okay.
Mike? I might recommend that you invite not just the public, but the, either planning commission, representative from the planning commission, the Cedar Act as well, because something might bleed over into their public engagement.
Any objections to that?
No.
Seeing none. Go ahead, Mike.
We don't need to talk about the page four. Paving, I want to do, I'm on page five, under paragraph 6E, paving bids. I spoke with Tim Rice from Wilt Paving, probably not unlike other contractors that do that kind of work, they're a little behind right now because of the rainy weather that we've had. So I had, Jim was in the room with me when I had it on speaker talking with Tim. My concern was getting it done by the end of September, that's the way the contract reads, but it also can be carried over into the, into the construction season into 2022, meaning 30 June of 2022. So if they cannot get to us, the Town of Castle and our projects, it can be carried over with no price differences into 2022. So the priority right now I've set is North Road, that's class two paving. That's what the crew's starting to work on tomorrow is the work that needs to get done on North Road to stabilize the areas of the road that certainly need it before it gets paved. And then talk with Tim and look at their timeframe. I'm not sure if it's a bad, really a bad thing to push it over into next year, so it gives us time to, plenty of time to prep those roads that are going to get paved, that are dirt currently, and do the, make sure we do the right thing with drainage and elevation and sub-bases and, one, I looked at today, I started looking at East Crystal Haven with Nedra, the deeds of where the road, what, how wide the road is and located and kind of in the same situation of the tax maps that we, that we ran into with Coon Hill and such, we're finding there's, some of these roads are not centered in the right of way. So we're going to have to approach the landowners in some cases because they're right on the edge, so instead of being on the middle of the right of way, they're set maybe to the far right or left edge. And I want to make sure that we do this right the first time and I engage property owners as needed to discuss that with them. And as far as building out the shoulders, one of the recommendations from Stu Johnson and Todd Eaton from V-Trans was make sure whatever we do, that the shoulders are wide enough to support that pressure, so when it's pushing the road, everything's pushing out, that it's not a steep incline and we end up, the size of the road are basically going to cave in. That's, you can drive around Creek Road, Route 4A, all, or Route 4A, those are all, that's what's happening in those roads and it's happening on North Road. So I just want to do the right thing. So if it does push over into the next fiscal year, work, I'll work with Wilt, make sure that we get to the beginning of the, of their list and it gives it time to, we do all the work this year, it gives it time to settle and we hopefully will avoid any problems in the near future. We don't pave it and have it start falling apart immediately. So it's going to do a lot, it's going to take a lot of research on my part to look at all these roads and find the deeds. I did today, I spent about an hour in there on one road, going back and forth between books and, so anyway, I think it also allowed me a chance to go up and down those roads and leave the flyers and talk to the folks about their concerns. One road I talked to, they were worried about speed. Some of the residents are worried about speed and wanted to know if there's any mitigation measures that the town would approve to put on the road, like speed bumps or those type of things. So there could be some more engagement, but it's not going to stop us from going through with the prepping of the roads. We know that we got a lot of work to do between utilities, culvert changes that are not deep enough, things that weren't done correctly maybe in the past and we can, we have a chance and opportunity now to fix them and do it right the first time.
Okay.
And that, that's, so I'll, I'll let you know what I find out, but I still have to have that conversation with Tim Wilt about the schedule.
I have one question, Mike. So if we do get pushed back to next year, to the spring of next year, is Tim going to assure us that we're going to be put first in the list for next spring, that we don't get pushed back because of something else, though?
I can't say he'll assure us, but last year we, or two years ago we did this, that was part of the negotiation was, okay, get us on your list before you start your big projects with somebody else and they agreed to it, so I will push for that. Any, any questions on paving? Any more questions on paving? On page six, Sucker Brook, state, bank stabilization and the weed harvesting. So I did talk with the contractor, they're, they're delayed in starting, so they're, they don't look at, they're going to be able to start until Monday of next week to begin that process. I did let Martha know today. I did let Martha know today that they'd be delayed. So, she just asked, asked me to keep her informed, but they're not, they didn't cancel, they just delayed it for a week. And pending any of your questions?
Any other questions for Mike?
I just have one.
Okay.
How is phase one on the sidewalk projects going? Is that so far all as well or is there...
I'd say that's a fair statement. We had our first meeting with Beldons and the MPM and the RE for the project. There was some stuff that had to get worked out. One of the big things was underneath the curb, they didn't have anything in the contract about the sub-base for the curbs. It basically was going to be put back on native soil and that's a no-no. So, we went back to Tim Dufresne from the, or the architect and trying to find out what, what their intent was there, but we all agreed in the room that it's going to have to have crushed down underneath it, so they're working up a cost estimate for that. But there's, if we put the curbs on native soil, we're asking for trouble. It's just a, not an industry standard.
Can I something more enough to absorb?
Yeah, it, there's enough room in the grant, it should absorb it, but I won't know that until I get the final numbers. Because there is a lot of...
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Moving on, warrants for approval.
I make a motion, we approve purchase order number zero four seven one four seven to the Royal Group for four-camera security system at the Highway Department for four thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Is that ninety-eight?
Like ninety-two.
Ninety-two, mine's cut off. And that's fifty percent paid for by a VLCT passive grant.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Motion a second, any discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
As an FYI, I'm also installing keypad doors, door locks, what we have here up there so they can be audited, because right now they're using a key unlock. And if, with the cameras and the key system, if someone, if something were to be missing from there or, or somebody breaks in between the keypad, if it's a break-in, we, they probably won't use the keypad. But if someone goes in there and something's missing, I can audit the lock like we can here, and there's going to be cameras in there as well.
Okay. Moving on to eight warrants for approval.
I make a motion, we approve warrant number zero seven two six R for six hundred and fifty dollars. Warrant zero seven two six for twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Warrant zero seven two two for eight thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and one cent. Warrant zero seven one five for thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Warrant zero seven two two P for twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents. And warrant zero seven one five P for twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll second it.
Add a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve number zero seven two three P for seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-one cents and number zero seven one six P for seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-one cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Add a second. Any questions, discussion?
I'll recuse myself.
Okay. Now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pages.
Stable together?
No.
Normally they are.
Yeah, I know.
That's the supporting documentation. Mike, you should add eight.
You got eight?
I have, right?
Hand them to me, Mike, I'll count them.
Right there, Jim. Hand me that file, I'll count it for you. Please? Yes, please.
Those need to be signed by Joe.
Yeah. Can you come in?
I'll come in.
Okay.
You too?
I'll say. I have eight.
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 Number sheet.
Select Board comments and/or concerns.
I'm good.
You're good?
I have seven things, but they can, they can be quick.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty surcharge total, have we gotten that, Michael?
We're going to be at the meeting next month with all your information.
You're going to be at the meeting next month?
The gentleman that has been going over will be here, Tim Gilbert will be here with all the information and the quarterly report for the select board.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting, sir.
Okay. Can you also ask him or the Solway's district, do they have any thoughts of lowering the district surcharge now that one of their two buildings that they've been spending thousands and thousands of dollars on every month? One of those is paid. Do they have any thoughts or discussion?
None at all.
Okay.
That's the Murph, right?
I think that's what you told us.
Is it the Murph?
I think, but that's what you said.
One of them is paid for.
The other one, the transfer station is two years away.
Okay, yeah. I mean, it was one or the other.
Are the district meetings open to the public now? Can you go over to the...
I don't know, I don't think they're having any right now. There's a lull and I don't, I think Tim said that there, there's a couple of months they don't have any, so I'll have to find out.
Okay, okay. Transfer station, the final numbers on that, have you given that to us?
Did you guys get the final budget yet? It'd be unaudited at this point.
Yeah, I think...
Did we get that?
Yeah, we got it for June, yeah.
The numbers should, are unaudited, the auditors are, be here tomorrow. So, that's unaudited, but that's what we, we did catch up with the district on, so we were, we were up to date as of thirty June with all revenues and expenditures.
I just wanted to see the, the final numbers for the year and numbers.
I believe they're on that sheet, Bob, but if you hadn't, if you didn't get it, let me know, I'll get you.
Okay, well, we, we wouldn't have got it in June because the year wasn't up yet.
Right.
Yeah, so...
So, you haven't got it?
No.
No, she gives you that report and it's unaudited?
Don't think we've got that yet.
Okay.
We shouldn't have.
I saw the number, so I was...
I know we got one for May.
Okay.
But I'm not sure about June.
Update on the guardrails in Drake Road? Are we any further ahead of that?
We're going to do the work.
We're going to do it.
We're never going to be able to get it, so it's, it's, it is on the work plan. I did a work plan out through November for the highway group, so it is on there.
Okay, okay.
I was just curious.
I just go by them and look at them.
Speaking of that, if you had ever, ever had a chance to talk to the town manager in Fairhaven to see if they, what their arrangement with the state was with the two bridges, they have that go over the highway?
Good idea.
I, I didn't, I can't.
Because we have three that go over the highway and they have two. And they may or may not have, because you could, once again, that's a horrible word, assume that they have the same arrangement that we would have at that point in time. Of course, that's back in the seventies, so...
Yeah, it's going to be finding in their town records.
Yeah. You know, you never know sometimes.
The question I left you on your answer machine last Thursday or Friday night?
I called you back, left a message for you.
Yeah, was I supposed to call you back to get the answer to that?
I haven't heard back yet from them, Bob.
Oh, okay.
They were going to have a meeting.
Okay.
And as soon as they had their meeting, they were going to call back, that's the message I left for you.
Okay, that's all I got, guys.
Joe?
Just a very small thing. Now that we're meeting in person again, I think we need to be careful that we have the right information on our agenda. This suggests that meeting was in the fire department community room, and if anyone over there thought they were going to come to our meeting, they would have been disappointed.
I didn't see that.
Just Mike Holden pointed out to me tonight, I went over and put a sign on the door so that if anybody did...
Oh, thank you. That should do it.
Okay.
That's it for me.
I'm good, I'm good.
I, I had one other thing.
Sure.
Are we, are we going to review Mike's review? Are we going to get the, Joe was supposed to write it all up, are, are we going to do that or, do you know what I'm doing?
He already did that.
You guys got a copy of, of Joe's write-up on it?
Yeah.
When did you get that?
We have that write-up, right, Joe?
I believe so.
I believe so too, yeah.
Yeah, we, I saw something we had in front of us that Joe wrote down, we had a couple of pages or three pages, I think, that Joe...
You guys, you guys had a meeting and discussed that all of it?
No.
And exited, no?
Yeah, it was the one that you were out and we talked about you, we talked with you on the phone. Because you were out with your, you got your...
Lyme disease.
Lyme disease, so that was the night we called you on the phone and discussed that, although, and Mike was out of the room.
Okay, and we brought Mike back in and we shared with him our, our thing?
That's correct.
Okay.
If you, would you like to hear?
I'd like, I'd like, I'd like I get a copy of it, yeah.
A copy of it, okay.
I was crying like crazy, didn't even hear it.
I might have heard that, but I didn't physically see it, so...
Any other, any other comments, follow-up?
I'm good.
Everybody's good? Okay. Any reason for a brief recap? Items for follow-up? Seeing none? You need an executive session, Mike?
No.
No? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A second. All those in favor of adjournings?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.
Aye.